...diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. Nice, nice crowd on game tonight. Heard a rumor that there might be a football game, so I'll try not to talk too long. First item of public hearing, that was last time. Are we doing this again?
Yes.
Regarding the mixed-use permit on Four West Monroe.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to amend the agenda, please?
Okay.
I'd like to move item seven, number one. Item one will become two. Item two will be number four. And item three will be number three.
I think you've got that.
Yeah.
So, is there any, any comments regarding the permit, or the mixed-use permit for Four West?
You need to close the public hearing first, Mr. Mayor, for...
Oh, good.
Then, then you can move to adjournment, but you've opened the public hearing, so you need to close that first.
Okay, very good. King of Commons will close the public hearing and now move into session. And, Mr. Cars, would you like to make that same motion you made just a second ago?
Yes. Motion to amend the agenda.
I'll call in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, amended, agenda is amended. All right, the first item is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the August 3 meeting?
It's approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Next, the public comments.
Are you sure? Okay. Hi, I'm Leslie Couch. As you guys know, the festival's coming up. I'd like to invite you all to participate in the parade on the 23rd at the park. Lineup will begin at 8:30. It'll start promptly at 10:00. We go the same route at Tid last year, but we'd love to have you all. And, of course, just to come visit through the weekend. Thank you.
Is coming forward up here, your name and address?
I'm Eric Carter. One second, Eric.
Derek Carter.
Eric.
E-R-E-R, spicy.
So, we have, we're on Erin Street, and we've been having some water issues when we have, like, heavy rain. Our house is the lowest point in the whole street, and we put in a stop bump and a drainage system. And, we're basically getting, like, all the water from three different yards are rolling into our yard. And, so, we are hoping that you guys could maybe put, like, one of those great drains, like, in the street right outside our house. We met with JD, was good enough to come by and check on us, you know, during a storm. And, we're hoping that that can happen, because something, I mean, water actually comes in our house if it gets, you know, too, too heavy, so.
All right, I mean, we had to...
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
...review, and I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to speak.
Um, I'm gonna, yeah, me and, I talked to Joe once about this, and me and Joe were gonna go out and make sure that we can do it right there, because, yeah, when, when that storm was bad, I can't find my tech, and I was checking all our drains, actually, and, yeah, they were having, water was standing out in the street in front of our house. And, I mean, the more it dried, the worse it got for them. Their whole yard, backyard, looked like a mud pit, like, they could go out and rassle in it, it was bad.
Yeah, we were crying, probably getting hold of the city attorneys and engineers and having to design it, because it would affect the whole neighborhood, so... That's why I told them, probably be best to come from the board here, you guys, see the guys, when they put that as a project.
We can certainly look in, I mean, I hate to sound like a penny pinchy, but let's see what the project costs. $10,000, we probably got that, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, we're probably, you know, a ways down the road on that. How long you guys lived here?
Seven years.
So, um, did neighbor do some dirt work?
Our neighbors did, and we talked to the guy that recreated her yard, he swears that nothing that she, he did could have, is caused that. And, this hasn't happened, because if we've been here, we just haven't had heavy rain in a couple years. But, it's literally, you can see the water just coming from the three yards, like, pooling into our yard, and, you know.
Do you feel like it made a difference to that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What was the house going on then?
We're 106.
106.
So, I mean, like I said, it's been bad.
Yeah, it's horrible.
I mean, we had rain over three or four inches, it happened every time.
It's, yeah, it's, yeah, it was bad.
We put in some, uh, French rain, and it's still happening. And, what happens is all the water comes down the street, or where my drain comes from, backyard, front yard, water comes down the street, makes mine back up, so we can just go back to my backyard. You know, so, look at a drain there, catch all that stuff, and all that my stuff, you know, I help things.
Yeah, because we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars, and it's just still some, it, it's just not. We're afraid if we get another heavy rain, it's still gonna come in around.
But, we did one on, 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 or not, yeah, we made one, just considered that, so maybe we get them to get a price on what we're looking at there, so we're...
How would we, like, how would we decide about that? How do we follow along for...
Jay, take in touch with JD and Joe.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, old business, discussion, consideration, and actions regarding Bruce and Tracy Rashad's request. We saw, we talked about that a couple months ago.
Yeah. What you got from you is actually agreement to let them hook up to a lot of system, they pay for it all. They're gonna pay the 30, uh, fifty thousand dollars for the water tap fee. They already got proof, they turned it to attorneys, they got proof that they bought out a lot of District 16, and they okay with it. And, then they got easements from the neighbor to the east of them, that they gotta wind their lines across. And, they know it's their responsibility, they're gonna hook up right by the city bean, and they're gonna be responsible for the whole 2,000 feet, man, to their house.
Any questions or concerns? Springman would ask for a motion?
Don't move. Something would approve.
And we've got a second, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Approved. Uh, next, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding gateway sign, the discussion of the sign on 24th Highway. Is that the one out on the west side?
Yeah, even a couple years ago, we had it, it fell down, and we was looking at putting some kind of a monument sign there, or some kind of sign. And, we got one of ours, it was like $14,000. Well, I got system and Moda's contacting me again the last couple weeks, been sitting there talking to them. The way it sits right now is we gotta replace that sign exactly as it is in that picture, which is four feet, I mean, it's like eight feet wide, twelve feet high, made of plywood, and painted with three wooden posts. If we deterred from that in any way, then we would have to go back in front of their committee to get a whole new permit and go to a whole new permitting system. And it has to go back the exact same way.
With material?
Same with material, it's gotta be the exact same. So, I don't know who we get to paint the sign, I think last time somebody said it was donated to the city, or some...
I was wondering if the body shop isn't making...
But, you know, like I said, it's gotta be a wooden sign, it's gotta be painted, and they always, they wanted us to take the little valley as a, you know, just say welcome to... But, he said, his boss said, "We need to make the exact same sign." No, they were, they wanted to take that out.
Oh, they want to take that out.
But, he said, "If we, we'll stay with this sign, the way it is, same material, same everything, we can put it back the way it is." Otherwise, it's gonna go further than, than a new permit cost. So, I was sorry about that, I didn't know if you guys were interested in it, or... Because they might have to find something, I don't know what the cost is gonna be, and they'd have to find someone to make that sign.
Why would they want to take it out, I mean, what?
It fell down.
What's that, oh?
It's integrated, fell down.
Little, in the valley, little town, why do they want to get rid of that?
Yeah, I guess they're not allowing that statewide, I guess, I, that's what they told me.
Okay.
I was gonna say, if you build a new sign, I was gonna say, just welcome to... That's all I could say.
So, if we wanted to use different materials, we have to apply?
We have to have a design, go through the whole planning process, apply to them, and...
We have to pay the money for that.
Do we have a time limit?
Yeah, they want it done by end of October, I was like, no.
How long does that sign?
But, they're willing to work with us, but they just wanted us to know when we know whether we're gonna put the sign back up, or not put it back up.
How long is that sign, you have to... Long time. Yeah.
So, that's, I just need direction, how you guys wanna do that, I don't know if you guys think...
What fund would that come out of?
I guess general fund. Yeah. I think we can maybe torture the street fund a little, call it a street sign, but I think, yeah, I think really pushing probably the whole... Eight months, I need to replace it again.
Should give you some due consideration here. Could we maybe get ahead to see what it costs before making a decision on whether to replace it or not?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I thought he tried to get over the, for, say, school, this is...
Oh, maybe the Moped?
Yeah, this is a Moped, make it...
Kill the job.
Yeah. That's why I was like, I just want you guys to know what, you guys want to mess with it or not, or...
Yeah, it'd be nice to put it back up.
Yeah, just give a bill on... A little lot of...
Okay.
All right, so we'll get, get pricing.
So, I'll call back, because they want me to call back tomorrow, I'll call back, and let them know we're interested in keeping the sign, which is gonna possibly get paid, just seeing what's the cost of doing it.
All right, next up, discussion, consideration, and action regarding appointment of Mr. Gary Frye to the Ward Two Almond position. Frye, would you like to come forward? Do you have the official? This is Mr. Frye, he's a Vietnam veteran, he's also a US Army.
I wasn't a Vietnam, I was, yeah, during Vietnam.
Oh, okay. So, served our country through the military, instructions, that, for a number of years. Looked at the background all along. Long time. Any questions you'd have for him? He has agreed to serve with us.
How thick is your skin?
I'm, I'm seventy-two, it's not very thick anymore.
I know that feeling.
I bleed easy.
Well, go keep your hands up, shield up front.
Mr. Frye, what are you, what's most important to you about our community?
Oh, I would say maintaining a small community. Place to live, I mean, it's just, you know, it's like independence, building a city, all that kind of stuff, it's just crazy.
Yeah, I'm gonna change his name here, but... Okay, so, um, is there, I guess, any, can I get a motion to approve Mr. Frye?
To approve Mr. Frye to the board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, a big election win for you. So, you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I swear it.
And I'll, and I'll try to go slow, because I...
And I'm all over here, I can say you guys can do that.
And, and if I go too fast, you can just say, "Okay." "Believing in freedom of democracy throughout the world, allowing increased cooperation between elected officials and other officials locally, nationally, and internationally," I state your name.
Gary Frye.
"Do hereby subscribe to the following oath, which I affirm as an alderman: to possess all qualifications established by law for the office of alderman, to support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Missouri, to support the provision of all laws of the state affecting cities of the fourth class and the ordinance of the city of Buckner, Missouri, to conduct my public and private life as to be an example for my fellow citizens, to be ever mindful of my neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and to extend the same treatment I wish to receive myself, to faithfully demean myself while in office. These things I, as alderman, do pledge to do in the interest of the citizens of Buckner, Missouri, for our government has been established." Congratulations.
Yeah, we don't have to do that, coffee.
So, your seat is right here, there's a package there.
He never got married. I didn't have to hold my hands to that one.
So, for the first time in a while, we've got a full board, and ready to roll. Uh, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Bryce England's request for a zoning change since the old city hall on 24th. And, I was gonna ask the guy, uh, planning and zoning for the President's sphere. I know, I was at the meeting, but...
Yeah, you were at the meeting, we had some conversation about it. The one concern that we have is if we were to approve it for multi-use, that would be zoning out one area and making an exception for that one area. And, that's something that we really need to think about before we do that, so we don't go around doing it all over our community to where things are being changed for one person rather than as a whole. So, that was, that was kind of our consensus, and it's up to you guys now.
Mr. Mayor, didn't we have a discussion about that another time, about how that was just a, a no-no to... Well, it's been, uh, twenty years ago when I was planning the zoning, I know the guidance I got was spot zoning was not good for much of the same reason Mr. Miles said, was that once you open that door, it's really hard to tell the next person, though, and that highway commercial that we have, we only have so much of that fraudage, and so if we start turning that into other uses, it does minimize our ability to control it going forward, because I think... Agreed, spot zoning is never favored, and once you mix use it, you'll never get it back.
And where we've done that in the past in a few select areas is because it's already had that same type of zoning within that immediate area, not an area all by itself.
Is there any desire to rezone parcel with Four Men, Four West Monroe?
Do you have a motion on either of them?
There's no motion, it dies for lack of a motion. Gary, nothing, it dies for lack of a motion. Uh, next item, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding bids from Construction Management Services for the construction of the Sprague Park.
Yes.
So, you should have your package, we moved from Bartley, you have it here. So, we was behind the Sprague Park. So, yeah, you can see there's a few bids there, one from Bartley and West, and one from Universal Construction. And this would be the kind of the subject manager experts that just hopefully sees the project.
This is what they manage. Yeah, that's...
Oh, the Park Board President was here.
Did you have a question?
No, I didn't, no. Did you wanna, did you wanna talk to Sheriff, yeah?
Yes, um, Park Board had a meeting last night, um, we did vote unanimously for Bartlet and West. For several reasons, um, we've worked with them on projects, and they give an overall cost. Where Universal, um, they show fifteen thousand, two eighty, then six thousand per month. So, we're a little bit worried about if it goes over, that each month should be another six thousand. I know, they put in there that they would be out one time a week for inspection.
Did we get that? Excuse me, did the, did you, I'm not, all of us are not knowing, the, the email that you got from...
Yeah.
Do they all have that?
Yeah, they all got it, and I put it to her.
Let me look for that.
Add in one more thing on the six thousand, if we do have to add, is, can we pause it for winter if we have to, you know, we don't have all the equipment till spring, and we have to pause a winter? That's one thing on Universal, we don't know, can we pause it, or do they charge us until it's done?
Right, it was my understanding, but we have a hundred and twenty day window on that, so if it's not done, then there starts accruing penalties on the companies that...
Yeah.
So...
It should be done in a hundred and twenty days, I mean, that's the limit of the contract.
Well, if we have the equipment, though, with the equipment being held out, is...
But, I think that, at this point, then, with the bids, this would be on the contractor, right, and the cities.
Yeah.
If we need an excavator, or whatever, that's on whoever gave us the bid to do that work, we're not performing any of it ourselves, I think, so... Yeah, that would be on, that'd be on whoever the construction manager is, and these guys won't move it. So...
When you say equipment, you're saying construction equipment, not the pieces that go in the park itself?
I'm sorry?
When, when he says equipment, he's not, is he referring to construction equipment?
No.
Or the, or, or like, the duck, or whatever this is?
Yeah.
Right. It's that, yeah.
Because we don't have a date quite when that's gonna be here yet, you know, I think what they're saying, twelve weeks.
Yeah.
So, are you anticipating starting this, this season, or...
Yes.
We're hoping, we're hoping, they're hoping to ship all the stuff that goes in the ground.
And I just got confirmation that they are, well, Joe just sent them the information, so it should be order. And, we are able to get that stuff that comes in first, before the actual pieces that are placed on top, so... This, I don't know how long it said yet, but it's gonna be, um, here before the actual equipment.
But, we don't have a date on the actual equipment, and that's what's worrying me, is on the finish date, are we gonna start queuing charges, if it's not...
I would not anticipate, they're not providing a service, I don't think that they can really charge us, but, I mean, that'd be something to verify if we went to...
No, in the contract, we can stop it at any time, and it just pauses the contract until...
That's what he would want, and that's...
And the other thing, when we voted last night, we just went off the information that we had at the time, and we just thought Bartlet and West had it laid out, if, if you'll be aware, pages, they just had everything in detail. It's kind of vague on the other bit, so that's why we made our choice.
I think you guys have done a full report, or the Park Board last night, I think you guys have done an outstanding job of pulling everything together, getting this, this close to the finish line.
It's been a long time in the making, we're ready to get it done.
Yeah, I think it's exciting if they can get in the ground this year.
Yeah, I...
That was better than I expected.
And our feelings right now is if, if it can get built, we can get everything in the ground, minus the big items that sit on top, that's something that, if we can pause whichever contractor, whoever does that part of it, if we can pause them, that's not a big issue. And then, soon as the weather breaks, we can take care of it, but I think that it really is kind of critical to go on and get it in the ground and have it ready, so we're not starting in March whenever the weather does break, and then here it is June, July.
Yeah.
And things aren't getting cheaper, so...
Right, and, you know, so if we go on, we do all the infrastructure, have everything done this year, and get it done, and if for some reason the big equipment's not here, that's the only thing that'll be left. And the big equipment to set it is really just bolting down eleven items, you know, it's a, it's, it's a pretty neat system the way it's set up, so... I, in my opinion, I think it should be done this year, get started on it, get it going, and... But, it is, as long as I let you pause that part of it, either of those general contractors will be fine, or, or, uh, construction management teams, but it's... Yeah, Bartlet and West have been real good to work with the long way through, so...
I can say, it seems like we have a good relationship with them.
Absolutely, they've been with us for years and years.
A lot of work with us.
Now, with Bartlet and West, are they gonna be doing any oversight of this project?
That's what this is for.
This is for oversight, this is for the...
Okay.
Is there a move?
Well, uh... It, it just kind of came to my attention that maybe that, that we might be using Bartlet and West too much. That maybe that we might need a, an oversight, just to keep some honesty there.
But, that's what the management's for.
Your oversight committee is the same one doing it.
We're being reviewed, reviewing Bartlet and West engineers versus the Universal engineer doing Bartlet and West. Kind of, I'm checking your homework, you're checking mine, versus I'm checking my own.
I'm just throwing a seed out there, that's all.
No, I can't disagree with that.
I don't, I don't know any, I don't know anything about either one.
What was your concern about Universal accounting?
Did you look at their sheet? When we voted on it last night, it's very vague, and being that it's not a direct number, I mean, so each month, it's six thousand more dollars. So, that was a concern for us last night.
But conceivably, I mean, but the, you guys, I think, have, they have a feature that you didn't have last night.
Yeah.
Because, uh, Universal, we sent them the same form that Bartlet and West went off of.
Right, but we couldn't vote on that last night.
Right, no, understood, I'm just saying that there was different information.
I don't know, it's just, in our opinion, we just update the professional, we've worked with them in the past, so, but...
And I, and I think, I think the board feels that way, too.
With your, given it twelve hundred, thirteen hundred dollars on a different seller.
Mr. Mayor, are we, are we talking about the whole enchilada, or are we just...
This is just Construction Management.
They're just in construction, yeah.
It's just, I think, two pages, three pages, and it's a letter from Archie Smith, and then the four pages right across.
Is it just like thirty-two thousand or thirty-three thousand?
Yes. I think you're giving good service from the guy that you want. Mr. Walker, I guess, concerned. So, we're... So, this is the first time I read this.
Yeah, it's a, bringing this one right along. But, no construction, or, or the other stuff. A lot of, this is my personal opinion, I can believe the way with this one. I understand the argument of having checks and balances of the different companies, so I could go along with that, or not. That's where I stand, at that matter, if you're thinking.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please, please.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
If the city wants to experiment with the Universal bid, if we do get everything done in one month, I mean, I don't know, even think about it, you know, but we could potentially save money, but it can go your way.
Right, no, understood.
I'm just something to think about, but...
No, I mean, and I'd love to believe that it will get done early, but...
Well, let's say, if we can pause it, that's the big thing.
Yes, right, yes.
If we can pause it, if we're, queuing charges all summer, winter long, that's a big problem.
Yeah, we can have that, no, absolutely.
We'll have to find out before we move forward with this.
But, it's in the contract that we can pause at any time, the city has a right. And it, it pauses both the construction and the construction management, I, I was gonna say.
As long as they're not, I mean, that can be paused, their services are not needed, but as soon as we start doing water again, it would resent, which, that's, that sounds reasonable. Right. So...
You know, it starts snowing in the middle of October, and if you have a project, we can stop the project, right? And if the time stops right there, and then, let's say they only use twenty days, they still get another twenty days after we, we start back up.
This is, I guess, I'm... So, they're, basically, what they're saying is all the stuff that Bartlet and West has put in here, they, they were required to do anyway, is that what I'm reading?
The ones in the yellow, a lot of them.
Yeah, the ones in the yellow, if you don't contract...
So, I mean, it's kind of, I don't know, it's kind of...
Well, this one, when I talk to...
I don't know, I mean, is that smoke and mirrors from Bartlet and West?
No, because Bartlet and West...
If they were supposed to do it anyway, then they put this in...
They designed it.
Yeah.
And then, what they're saying is, and I talked to Zach, who's the Universal Archie, he said that the ones highlighted in yellow are a responsibility for the general contractor to do, that's what is required from the contract, for the general contractors. And anytime the state was dipping to get involved with it, it, it puts a lot of burden on us. So, we should let the general contractor do their job, and then the construction manager just make sure that, that job's getting done. Yeah, and he stipulated here that while the general contractor... Yeah, and he stipulated here that while the general contractor should be doing this, if they're unable to, that they would step in and do it themselves.
Is that gonna be extra?
No, that's what he's saying.
As part of their, as part of their fee? Okay. Yeah. I'm not reading. Again, Jim, and I don't... I don't have a, uh... Have a big gong thing, so...
You could go, or you could go.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion for Universal Construction for oversight.
I didn't get that.
I'll make the motion for Universal Construction for oversight.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
No.
Motion carried. But your objection is noted.
Huh?
Your objection is noted.
Yes, there.
Uh, next up. Discussion consideration regarding bids for the construction of a spray park. That's the big thing for this stuff.
Mr. Mayor, I sent everybody with the S F and the engineer for the sort of construction costs.
Okay, you have that one page here, you have that.
So, that's what you guys got for me?
Oh, there it is. I know somebody just called me and asked, and so, I think Mr. Ross at Bartlet and West, uh, put together kind of a summary of what expenses and whatnot.
Well, I'll jump in on this one, someone else.
Okay.
I'm not scared. Obviously, you go to, there's pretty dramatic price differences with Golden Rule compared to the others. Um, usually, I always think, you know, it is too good to be true, it could probably is. So, that has me a little worried that they're actually too cheap, which I like being true, and saving money. I think that's, you know, what we should be doing. But it just has me a little concerned, just because it's so drastic. Uh, and I know in my own life, I usually throw out the high bid and the low bid, and you know what, going in the middle, see if it'll work out all right. Um, but I know we're in a cost crunch, so, but I just have some, some concerns there. If it's quality or who we're dealing with, or that, so, that's...
Bartlet and West, that's what they projected in the very beginning, the cost. The other three are just way out of budget.
And what I've associated some of that with, Ben, is if we take a, uh, beat-up ninety-two Chevy truck into the body shop, they have a fender painted, they can paint it for three hundred dollars. If we take a brand-new Corvette in for the exact same amount of work and same paint, they're gonna charge three thousand dollars. And I really do associate it a lot to that, because these other companies, they do go around doing spray parks. The work they're performing is the end result, which is a spray park. Where whatever Golden Rule bid, what they did bid, if you'll look at like the line item of the water line, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, so if you could help me with that, Golden Rule bid the water line coming over for what, what dollar amount?
Is that the six inch?
The six inch water line.
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand?
Yep.
Okay, and you can see what some of the others bid, you see the, the crazy number difference?
There's a forty thousand, a sixty thousand, and a fifty thousand.
Right, and, uh, like Kyle that's on the Park Board, you know, we've had this discussion with him, we've talked about it, and he knows what it costs to put in a water line. And it doesn't cost sixty thousand dollars to put in two hundred and twenty foot of water line, or whatever the number is. And the, the other crazy one is, if you look at the bottom line, which is the final grade. Our final grade price, uh, Golden Rule's final grade price was nine, uh, nine thousand, or what was that? And some of the other companies had in there forty and fifty thousand dollars. We're talking about final grade on a eighty by eighty square. The number for that...
Yeah, the one that's really out of whack is the concrete, and maybe that's what you're talking about?
Right.
Spray pad and sidewalk?
Right, some of that.
Cause they're at twenty-one thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And we got others at a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand.
Right, and, and I will say that your new alderman has been the construction business most of his life, and with a little bit of research, he could verify a lot of what I'm saying is, uh, whenever we go in and we do something for a homeowner that may be putting in a concrete patio, a ten by twenty concrete patio, our price is gonna come in, uh, somewhere in the twelve to fourteen dollars a square foot. But if we go and we do it for a pilot truck stop, our price is gonna come in at forty and sixty dollars a square foot. And I feel that's a lot of what the price difference is on this spray pad. And even between the three other companies that bid it, their numbers are not even consistent with one another. Their bottom line is very consistent. But they just threw numbers in between to make it go up to be this nine hundred thousand dollar spray park, because they know that's how much a basic spray park costs.
Can I do a question for, uh, Joe and Mr. Murray? Uh, these individuals, whoever get the bid, they'll be asked to, at post upon, right? So, if they're not able to perform, that they bond would be used to pay for...
And it's fine, and it's fine, and it's fine, I'd like to get a hand on that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I know that one of the contractors for the concrete, that I think, had bid, um, been, bid it low because he lives here, and he did it for, he did it for us, and I know this guy, so...
And I know that, that's kind of the consensus throughout this, is yes, there's gonna be money being made, it's gonna be a profitable job. We're looking at each small job, though, and saying, we can profit on this part of, we can profit on this part of it. But our bottom line number was not to make three hundred thousand dollars off of this job at the end. And we do have local suppliers that are gonna be helping do the work, and that makes it, where the price is a lot better than, than bringing the big boys from uptown down to do it as well.
And to, make sure that I understand, what we'd be voting here would be either bid one, two, three, four, five, or as I understand it, bid number three and bid number five should be combined, that Larkin and...
Yeah.
Larkin and Golden Rule are working together?
Yeah, yeah, Golden Rule, uh, Larkin's doing the, the bathroom portion, they're doing the block work for the back room. Yeah, those two are gonna be up together.
That, and, and just, just to say, I mean, I'm looking at here, that is a phenomenal spray park. It's gonna be one of the better ones around, it's phenomenal.
Mr. Mayor?
Just...
If we go with bid three and...
Three and five.
Three and five, like, could we put a, a cap price on that? And then, that they would have to come before us, if they're gonna spend, let's say, forty extra grand, you know, whatever.
Well, there will be, everything comes as a change order.
Okay, so...
They, they get the contract amount, and if it goes above that, they'll have to go through the engineer, through the construction management people, to do a change order, and then come to the board for you guys to approve the board, the change orders.
I mean, I just know things come up, and there could be, you know, it's almost fifty grand.
Yeah, once the contract is written out, anything above that has to be a change order. They're gonna have to fluff you guys to be the...
So, so the, and I guess, because some of this, we've already spent, uh, what, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand? No, uh, there was something that you already...
Yeah, we spent, we made that the equipment order.
Okay.
I just sent a check off last Friday for sixty-nine thousand, which is what happened to the equipment cost before they do it.
This is in the part list within the Park Board budget, correct?
Yes.
I am.
And do you know how much we'll be financing out of that, or?
And then, it'll be a cash, correct?
We've been saving for years.
Yeah, they go in and they go, oh, even better, thousand.
So, if my math doesn't tell me here, bid three and bid five together, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars.
That's what I'm getting. But when you look at the one pager that we got from Bartlet and West, you'll see the total project is about three hundred and seventy, and then we get in the contingency and the construction management, it goes a shade over four hundred.
And this is gonna go right where the ball fields are, is that?
No, it'll be up on top where the small diamond used to be, it'll be next to the shelter house.
I think it's page three on the, this one.
There's a bathroom it's gonna go.
It's gonna go right next to a connected, but it's going to be towards the front of the park, which we figured would be less pipes and things, which would make it cheaper.
I got a little... And it's great that, I mean, if we start from this fall, because I saw there's gonna be some street cuts up on parks, so if we do a paving up there, we won't have to cut it after we've paved it, so let you do another one.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would also, just like beauty department with Golden Rule, we have to be in for those parts of the bed, and they're always around on the spot, so I have no problem. Even though their prices are four or five times less, I don't have a problem using, uh, that company.
So, would you like to make a motion to accept bids three and five?
I'm sure I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds like we get you a, a construction manager and a construction firm, so. Uh, next item, uh, discussion is regarding the Mayor's Christmas Tree event on December second. I believe that's a Saturday night?
Yes.
And are we thinking seven, six-thirty?
Um, well, you will not be here till six-thirty, seven, it'll be just like last year.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll proba, I don't know if we're gonna praise this year or not, we haven't really discussed that. But we'll still have like activities in here, um, and have Santa Claus, and, and you light the tree. So, it probably will be around seven o'clock for the tree lighting.
Can I be informational, or do we need a motion on this?
It was an admission, yes.
Okay, so, so, yeah, so, mark your calendars. Uh, prior to seven P M. on December second, be here for festive night of, uh, Christmas season kicking off.
What time are you in there?
Prior to seven, P M. Uh, discussion consideration and possible action regarding a citywide cleanup. I've had a couple people ask me about that, and, uh, I don't know if anybody's got any other question, I think, Mr. Bullock?
Oh, no, I was the same with the board.
As you remember, Joe, with that custom, like, it's raining, what, fifteen hundred dollars or something, what?
Two thousand, yeah, fifteen to two thousand.
That weighs a ton of money.
Oh, we pay for the tons, we don't pay for the time, or for the heat itself, we just take, how many tons comes in?
And it keeps a few mattresses off the street?
Yeah.
We're just gonna survey.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to, do you want to check and see when they're available?
Yeah, okay.
Follow up, next meeting. All right, discussion consideration and possible action regarding the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. I can speak to that a little bit, thank you to Mr. Norris and Mr. Ross for lots of input and, and helping keep me on path. Uh, the budget, uh, this is, if you wanna, because there is a lot of digest, I'm not asking for a motion tonight, just to put this in front of you, just because it needs to be approved by the end of the month. Uh, so, next meeting, we'll vote on it, but, uh, it is in balance, uh, the general fund, we are seeing a little bit of accumulation there, we're able to do, uh, fund the police, uh, we've got a full car in there in the budget. Uh, so, that, that's one thing, uh, does have salary increases for everyone who actually during the fiscal year. Really, just kind of taking prior here and rolling it forward with a, a little bit of adjustment to try to do about an eighty percent adjustment on most of it, just because of the inflation issues of these things. But, uh, if there's any, any questions, I can try to answer them, or get your answers. If there's no questions, we go to elected officials' comments.
I'd like to thank Park Board for putting their nose in the grass to ever get this board, but, uh...
Kudos on your nice job.
It's, and it's gonna be a phenomenal park.
That's why they pay you the big money.
That's why our Park Board President's got the highest salary of all our board presidents.
Now, the only problem is, keep, the out-of-towners will be coming in to get on that park, on that, on that.
She has worked, she has worked on it over three years, she really has.
Well, that's cool, the kids will like it.
Chief, you have anything for us tonight?
You don't have to. I gotta be on the spot. I did want to thank the Miles's over there for helping me with the problem we've had here in town. It's not completely taken care of yet, but we're getting a lot closer.
A lot better.
Yeah, so, I'm sure most of you already know what that is, but, uh, and then, just the, about the memo I gave you about trying to get a couple people hired who actually got interest for a change, so.
Yeah, so, and, and that's, Joe and I, we're doing this.
Yeah, I just...
Okay, I mean, I, I have no objection, but I think that's a good lead, so, I'd say go ahead and get them interviewed. Go ahead, it's in the budget.
That's all done, everything's done, except your approval and then the drug screen, so.
Okay, yeah, so they get the drug screen, and they pass, proceed.
Well, I hope so.
Uh, I did, uh, one thing that would point out, is you see in here, uh, the list of, uh, the bills that we've got. Um, I, I wanted you to, where, what I wanted to have is on the go-forward, and I know Jimmy, you remember back when, when we used to vote on these things?
Yes.
And I just, uh, I don't know, I know we quit, and I don't know why we quit, but I just think it would be good for everybody to, you know, everybody's like, where's our money go? Uh, well, this is where money goes, so...
You're exactly right, we used to...
Going forward...
With all the bills.
So, I thought, when I go forward, you'll see an agenda item on the bill approval, so, this kind of transparency with the community and the board. Never trying to hide anything, it's just we, kind of momentum versus inertia, we hadn't been doing it, and why change? But that's, I think it's a good, good thing for everybody to know what's going on, so.
Let's have a hold on the D N R.
On the D N R thing?
Yeah, Missouri Department of Natural Resources underwater, so if you look at the...
I can't hold on to, I, I keep checking, the joint fund, if it gets a little bit low, I can, I put a whole bill in there, with, with back up, and we paid assistance, we got no doubt.
Well, I thank everyone for your time tonight, and we can get you, I think, kick off in about forty minutes, so we'll get you out of here, so you can get home, if you have an interest in that kind of stuff. If not, thank you for coming and participating in our community tonight. Stay in the gym? Well, I guess I need a motion to...
A motion to...
Yeah, yeah, to say, yeah, my God, I'm a dickhead.
I'm, I'm gonna go to the gym.
Oh, yeah, that's right. All in favor?
Aye.